I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Human Services Committee. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the clerk take the roll, please? Commissioner Sumasco, Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Trowlow.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Bead. Present. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a citizen wishing to be heard tonight, Don Callaway. Topic VA Board Appointment.
Go up to the podium.
Yeah, I received a letter from the VA office downtown, or downstairs, saying that there was an opening on the board. And so I applied and I was instructed to come here if you might have some questions.
We will address that during the regular agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
You want to talk a little bit about yourself?
I served four years in Marine Corps in the late 60s, one tour in Vietnam. I served 10 years at Selfridge, working on P3s and C9s. I've been involved with the VFW for over 20 years. I served two terms as District Commander in District 10, which includes all the counties in the thumb plus Tennessee County. The second year, I was, the district came together and we achieved all-American status, which is quite an accomplishment for a district of, at that time it was 43 VFWs. I serve as the Finance Officer for the DAV on Military Street. And I serve as the Finance Officer for the St. Clair County Veterans Council. In 2019, I was St. Clair County Veteran of the Year. I've lived here in Port Huron for maybe seven years, and before that I was in Elgin. Anything else?
Not at this time, thank you. We have Diamond Davis. Topic Health Advisory Board. We do have time on the agenda for those of you that are here tonight for the appointments. So during the new business part where we get to that, you're more than welcome. We'll actually call you up and allow you time to give more information about who you are and why you're interested in the position. So we will open that up to all the candidates. You'll speak then, Diamond? Okay. Seeing no other citizens wishing to be heard, we'll move on to updates. We have an update from Michigan State University Extension. Phil?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I wanted to say thank you for your past pledge to support MSU Extension, which includes a lot of different programming across this county plus across the state of Michigan. My name is Phil Kates. Originally, I was a Casco Township resident and actually started on the farm there in Casco Township. But I am a Michigan State University graduate, and I worked for MSU Extension as a field crops educator. But recently, with the departure of Jerry Johnson, the District Director, I've been named interim District Director for this region. So I have five counties, which includes St. Clair County. So one of the things that I wanted to do is I wanted to try and provide any information that you might need as Commissioners, so that you can stay up to date with what MSU is doing, what MSU Extension is doing, and also provide you an opportunity to ask me questions. Plus, I've got a little bit of an update when it comes to agriculture and what's going on across the area. So I have been working throughout the thumb since 1983, which is a long time. And I would have to say that St. Clair County has been one of the best supporters for extension across the entire region in my entire career. And I've gotten to know a lot of farmers. In fact, I recognize some of the farmers that are here in the room tonight and had a chance to chat with them earlier. I want to let you know that agriculture is very important. It's critical, really, when you think about the economic impact that it has for this county as well as the state of Michigan. In fact, it's a hundred, over $100 billion industry for the state of Michigan. Now, that's a small number compared to what's going to come out after we have the census information, because that number is going to grow dramatically. The number that I gave you is actually based on 2017 information, which was the last time that we had the U.S. Ag Census. And since then, we've seen a tremendous increase in the price of commodities. And so I expect that we'll see a big rise when it comes to that. But what I wanted to really try and do tonight is just focus in on one particular program that I've been actively involved with, and it's called the Virtual Breakfast Series. Many of you understand that things changed dramatically in 2020 with the pandemic. Well, it was no different for MSU Extension. I have a program that started in 2018, and it's all online. And in 2020, we were actually right there, ready and prepared, to provide online programming for our farmers. And so it's a 26-week series held during the growing season. And in 2022, just as an example, we had over 3,700 participants, which is a big number when it comes to programming. We averaged nearly 200 a week for this year. And right now, I would say that, based on what I'm seeing, we should have well over 4,500 people participate in this year's program. But it's not just a matter of who participates, but it's how they participate. We do things differently than we've ever done it before, because it used to be all in person. Well, this program is all online. So what I'm going to say is that the way we program today is different. It's not better or worse, it's different. We've had to incorporate a lot of different things, online and in person, to make sure that we can reach as many people as possible with agriculture information. Because my job is to bring information from the university to the country and to the county, provide farmers with information that they can use, that they can be more profitable. And really, that's the bottom line. So when I talk about numbers and what it means to St. Clair County as an example, hold on here, let me get this sheet of paper. St. Clair County was number two as far as the number of participants for that Virtual Breakfast Program. So it really has supported that programming very well, and I would say that they have learned and gained from it. So what does that mean? Well, every major field crop growing region in the state was represented. We've had over 15 states that have been on this program, over 12 countries so far this year. This morning, we had some from South Africa, Malaysia, Sri Lanka. I have no idea how they got us, but they were there. And so it's information that can be used not only here, but abroad. So what does that mean for the farmers then here in the county? Well, we have increased knowledge, and I've seen improved production efficiency. This is based on feedback from the farmers. In fact, over 99% said they increased knowledge from this program. Now, that's a big number when you think about 3,700 people that participated. What does that mean as far as total economic impact across the state of Michigan? Over $7.1 million from this program alone. Now, that's not just farmers. We work with agribusiness, we work with government agencies, we work with farmers, all the people that are involved in agriculture. And from that, we disseminate information that can be used locally. And really, when I talk to our business partners, the agribusiness people, they see more people than I can ever see, because they're on their farms almost on a weekly basis. So I think that it's just an example of what agriculture can mean and does mean to the county and to the farmers of the area. And I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but I just think that it's a great opportunity for farmers to gain information, improve that knowledge, and provide efficiency for their operations. So with that, I'll just stop and ask, are there any questions that you have of me tonight?
Seeing none, welcome, and thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. I look forward to spending some time working with Commissioners and the administration staff in the future here as the interim District Director. Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, are there any conceptual initiatives tonight? Seeing no old business, we'll move on to new business. In your package, you'll see that there we have two people who are interested in the openings for the VA Board. We did hear from Don already this evening. Is Jim Leslie here? Would you like to have three minutes to tell us about you?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for giving me this opportunity. I look forward to serving, if that's your decision and like that. Did you get the application that I sent in? Did all of you receive that?
We did. It's part of our packet.
Great. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. Born and raised in Port Yorn, third-generation family business starting in 1923, which was Bill Leslie and Sons Incorporated. We specialized in all types of car work, restoration, things of that nature. As far as military, and I went to the normal high schools that we all did here and like that, participated in sports. I was drafted, once I finished high school, I was drafted. Got my draft notice three months after I graduated. I had no choice, so it was strictly infantry all the way. I served in Vietnam. I was with the 1st Infantry Division, 2nd Infantry Regiment, mechanized infantry. It was an interesting time in Vietnam. I came out of Vietnam, I was wounded, I was awarded the Purple Heart, I still have shrapnel on my right leg. I was awarded two Silver Stars, I was awarded a Bronze Star, Purple Heart, and also the Vietnamese Cross of Gamble. I've had a strong interest ever since I was like 12. My dad was a World War II veteran, and my great uncle was a polar bear. He was killed in Archangel. And so I've had some interesting roots. And my dad was a combat veteran, but he was in Persia and Iraq during the war. So he had a lot of interesting stories, so I latched onto those stories. And so since I've been 12 years old, I've had a really keen interest in the historical aspect of the military and soldiers and what they accomplished. And I've also collected memorabilia, I've done displays for veterans and like that. I sat on the board of the library here. I belong to multiple veterans organizations with life memberships. And I actually sat for three years on the VA for the Lansing Trust Fund. So I was, that was a great experience, having veterans coming in and helping them out. Basically, what I've done through most of my life is it's been linked or keyed to veterans. And so to me, this is a next step. I've been commander at post, I've held just about every position at post. I'm adjutant now at Post 8, and I'm also adjutant of the Sons. So if you have any questions, I mean, there's a lot more to it, just like the gentleman who was up here before me. Both have served a lot and done a lot. So I'd ask if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Any questions?
I asked him some while he was sitting here before, so.
Great.
I'm sorry? I asked you some questions before Mr. Callaway got here. Yeah, we had a discussion before. Hopefully, that didn't influence anybody. That's what both of you are here for, to influence us. Yeah. Also unmarried, my wife worked for AT&amp;T, I have two daughters. My oldest is 35, she's a special education teacher here in Port Yorn. My youngest is fourth grade, and she's 32. And so like I said, we've had all of our life here in Port Yorn, great, great place. With that, I'm going to stop talking, you know, let somebody else talk. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you both for your service for our country and your interest in serving on this board. We will make the final decision at the next board meeting, so you'll know at that time which appointment has been made.
I'll make the motion to send both candidates onto the full board.
Support.
And if I could, I just want to thank them both. They were both there at the same time. My oldest brother was over serving Vietnam at the same time, so thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item B, the Health Advisory Board. The same opportunity for those that are interested in serving on the Health Advisory Board, there are four. So we'll give you each a few minutes to speak this evening, and then we'll go from there. The first one on the agenda is Diamond Davis.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present myself before you today. My name is Diamond Davis. I am a registered nurse at Marwood Nursing and Rehab currently. I work the midnight shift on the rehab unit, and I am also the midnight supervisor overseeing staff and dealing with different issues with the residents that may come about helping the nurses address if they don't know what direction to go in. I have been in healthcare a total of 17 years. I was a CNA for 10 years, ALPN for six years, and most recently, I earned my RN degree from St. Clair Community College. I am here to be, today to be considered for the Health Advisory Board. The reason I believed I should be considered is because I can be the bridge. And what I mean by that is, a bridge, as you know, provides passage, a passage over obstacles. And in healthcare today, we deal with obstacles such as multi-generational, because they need to be reached with education and health, with healthcare, with healthcare. Sorry, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. So I am the bridge for that generation, because at their age, they want you to listen to stories that they have been through and learn from their mistakes. But they also want you to take some of their ideals that may have worked into consideration. Secondly, I can be the bridge for the youth, because now we're coming up against that generation where they do want to be heard, they do want to be included in their healthcare decisions, they do want to have rights. I am a mom of two boys, and they have questions about their healthcare all the time. I feel like when I was younger, you know, we just kind of went to the doctors, got our vaccines, because our mom said so, or got this medicine because the doctor told us to. We're now, kids are asking questions to S2Y, why am I doing this? Why do I need to have this? What is this helping me do? Which also leads me to an important concept that I learned in nursing school about prevention methods, which there are three. There is primary, where we have to prevent the diseases from happening. And with the children asking questions, we can prevent these diseases, but we have to educate them. If they don't know that they shouldn't eat fruit snacks every day and they should eat an apple, how are we preventing diabetes? You know? The secondary is screening. We need to also let them know that, you know, generational, your genetic makeup, you need to be screened for certain things. And if they don't know that that's a thing, they don't know to look for those signs and symptoms early on, or to have a healthier diet to prevent these things from happening to them. And third is the tertiary prevention, which is, once you already have the disease, you then have to take measures to limit the negative effects, negative effects that you're going to have on your body, such as high blood pressure or diabetes. Are you going to change your diet? Are you going to go to the doctors? Are you going to monitor your blood pressure? Do you know how to monitor your blood pressure? As someone on the board, I think we need to get information out there to these people on how to do these things, because most people don't know how to do these things. And if we never educate them, how are they ever going to learn how to do that? So today, I want to be the voice on the board for the voiceless, for the people that have questions but don't know how to ask them. And please consider me, thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Dawn Falk.
Hi, I'm Dawn Falk, and I would like to be considered for the Health Advisory Board. I started out, 60 years old, started back in medical when I was 18 years old, nurses' aid, and then I went into the, went into the military, I was a Coast Guard corpsman. And I served for five and a half years, and was a military wife for the next 20 years with my husband. And traveled all around, and eventually ended up here in Port Huron. And we've been very happy here, raised our children here. Got a degree way back when as a medical assistant down in Florida, an associate's degree. Came up here, worked in various offices throughout all the stations that we'd been at. And came up here to Port Huron, had our kids, raised our kids, I stayed home. And after my kids got a little bit older, I needed to do something, so I went on back to school and got my ADN at St. Clair Community College. I worked as a med-surg nurse for five years, and also at the same time, I had a position at Women's Wellness. After I was done working there at Port Huron Hospital, I went into hospice care for approximately three years. And then after that, I worked for Lampore for four years. And then life takes you away, and you get busy. And I quit the job, and I've been home, and I would like very much, I've got plenty of time, I would really appreciate the opportunity to serve. Especially, you know, I, you know, went through all that stuff that was going on, the mask mandates, kids in schools and stuff, that was just a terrible time. Came to a lot of the meetings, heard a lot of wonderful people get up here and speak. People came in with peer-reviewed information, they were just, you know, spent a lot of time gathering information, making sure that the information was correct. And I would like to represent those people who maybe don't always agree with what the state or the government mandates, but actually think for themselves, gather information. So, you know, that probably sounds counterintuitive, wanting to do this, but just being honest. And that's who I would like to, I'd like to serve the community, but I would especially, you know, I'd like to be the voice for people who may not always, it's like they're not always going to go for government mandates, they want to think for themselves. There's always two sides to a story. George Baldwin made the comment at one of the meetings recently, that, you know, it's good to have people from all different walks of life who serve on these committees. So I would like to be maybe an alternative lady, so whatever. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Alyssa Maturin, and I apologize if I pronounced your name wrong. Alyssa? And then finally, Jessica Maurer? Is Jessica here? Okay. So at this time, I am looking for a motion to move the candidates to full board.
Make the motion, send the applicants to the full board.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, the Library Consultant Services for the Bookmobile Contract Approval Specialty Vehicle Services.
Make a motion to forward it to the full board.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, Resolution 2315, Improving Area Agency on Aging 1B Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Implementation Plan. Make a motion, send that to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
If anyone would like to serve on this board, I'm on year four, so we have just started meeting again in person, and it's in Southfield, but it's not a terribly long meeting, but it's, there's a lot of information spread there. So if anyone else would like to take their turn, I would be more than happy to hand over that title.
It's a conflict.
We'll get back with you.
For me, yeah.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other human services matters to be brought before the board tonight?
You got E, the resolution?
That was the one you just voted on. That's okay.
The one before, the Health Department.
Oh, thank you, D, close. St. Clair County Health Department, St. Clair County Community College, SC4's Nursing Agreement Extension Approval.
Make a motion.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that point of order. So any other human services matters this evening?
I'll make a motion to receive and file, Senior Citizens' Milage, 2023 New Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to receive and file. So moved, Baldwin.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adjourn?
So moved, Baldwin.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sumasco? Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Bead?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Trowlow?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Here. Can I get a motion to set the agenda as read?
So moved.
Support, Bead?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Are there any citizens to be heard? Are there any citizens to be heard for the Judiciary Public Safety Committee? Hearing none, moving on to new business. Office of Public Guarding Contract Approval for Thomas Ruder, clear programming?
I'll make a motion and move it to full board. Support.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to Resolution 2313, provide, uh, proposed revisions to St. Clair County Animal Control and Protect, Protection Ordinance.
Make a motion and send it to the full board.
Second.
Carrie, would you like to talk about this? I'm sure there's going to be questions.
Um, sure. I actually have our Animal Control Director, Melissa Miller, is in the audience. Um, that can answer questions regarding the proposed changes.
Melissa? Do you want to talk a little bit about the, I guess, just the background? I mean, I've been here a long time. We did something back, Commissioner Samasco. It's gotta be, well, I wasn't born here yet, so that's fourteen years ago kind of stuff, so.
Well, hi. Um, thank you for having me here today. My name's Melissa Miller. I'm the Director of Animal Control. And for some of you, this is our first time meeting others of you. We've had some pleasant conversations and I look forward to your questions. We have, uh, ordinance currently that does serve our county well in some respects. However, we've also been asked to take a look at this by Polly McKillop, who is the Head of Animal Industries for the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. Uh, so in looking at making sure that this is consistent with new laws that have passed since this, this ordinance passed. So we've had a number of laws that have passed as a state pertaining to companion animals as well as to our agriculture livestock in terms of cruelty and neglect and also in terms of, uh, husbandry and care. So with that in mind, I took a look at the ordinance that we have and made, uh, some revisions for your review. Primarily, the revisions that were made were clearing up some of the definitions to make sure that they were in compliance with existing law and making sure that they were the same definitions. We've run into a few problems when it's come to prosecuting certain cases, specifically dangerous dog cases, as well as animals at large, where the, um, the language in our ordinance doesn't match what's in our state law. With our ordinance, we go through our county attorney through our corporate counsel. Uh, with things that fall under Michigan state law, we go through the prosecuting attorney's office. And so we've had some struggles with getting some convictions on some things that are really simple, like animals running at large, um, or some dangerous dog situations. One of the areas that's been heavily changed has been the dangerous dog provision to be updated with the National Animal Control Association's, uh, best practices of using a scale by Dr. Ian Dunbar, who's a veterinary behaviorist, uh, where we look at the wound pathology of a bite as opposed to dogs' behavior. The wound pathology lets us know if that animal bites again, what is the severity and the risk that happens with that bite. So you'll notice in Section 9, there's some very substantial rewrites. There is also some changes in, uh, Section 7 regarding, uh, humane care and neglect. A lot of that was moving different pieces around so that they were grouped into like, uh, topics so that it wasn't quite as haphazard. Um, so that all things dealing with animals moving at large were all together, all things dealing with animal welfare were together. One of the conditions that I am very passionate about is, um, changing the language regarding, um, cropping and docking of dogs' ears and tails and that being done by a veterinarian. In 2013, the American Veterinary Medical Association published a literature review of the welfare implication of cropping of dogs' ears. Um, that, that should happen between the time that the dog is between six and 12 years old and that it should be done under general anesthesia with post-operative care, pain management and antibiotics. All of that would be practicing veterinary medicine. And those who are doing it at home with a pair of, quite honestly, kitchen shears, um, are practicing medicine without a license. Um, around 2020 and then again revised in 2023, the AVMA published, uh, companion literature regarding canine docking of tails that is typically done when the neonate is between three to five days old. Um, dogs at that point are very much capable of feeling pain and the research that has been done shows that the pain can affect the central nervous system. The pain from cropping can also affect how the animal, uh, how their flight or fight center of their brain develops and experiencing extreme pain at such a young age um, does have detrimental effects on both their behavior and their welfare. So it would be, in my opinion, that, um, in terms of cropping and docking of ears and tails, that that be done only by a veterinarian and not done at home with, uh, implements, that would be considered, uh, providing veterinary care without a license. There's a few other changes that, uh, that are, are simple word changes to be reflective of the Hardrick versus Detroit, uh, in February 2016. That allows us to stay in compliance with the Fourth Amendment, meaning that we can't seize animals with, animals are considered property and that we cannot seize them without due process, um, without having a warrant or without having the proper judge's, uh, civil forfeiture paperwork. So some of the language that's been changed in here, you'll see in the annotated side notes that it says that we have to be able to have that documentation. We, even though we fall under public health as well as public safety, we can't simply go onto somebody's property and take their animal unless there's a dire emergent situation. Another area that was changed, uh, the wording was just simply changed, has to do with service dogs and licensing, um, to make it compliant with the ADA. There are a few changes when it comes to some of our kennel, uh, wordings. I am very proud to say that all of our kennels are in compliance with our current ordinance. Um, there's just a little bit of tightening up of language that I'd like to see. One of which is that the floors of primary enclosures should be constructed to support good health of the feet. The previous wording just said that it couldn't be wire mesh. But there's a lot of others, like slat floors, wooden floors that can't be disinfected and other, um, substrates that aren't healthy for animals. So rather than just putting wire mesh, we wanted to make sure it includes good foot health. Uh, we want to make sure that animals are able to stand up, turn around, lay down and move in natural positions, which is part of Regulation 151, um, which is MCL 287.332. There are some administrative changes as it comes to dangerous dogs. We talked a little bit about the Dunbar Bite Scale and how that would affect, um, but this adds on a few other layers of protection. We have found that, um, euthanasia is, uh, sometimes the correct remedy. There are also situations where, uh, the, a judge may feel that proper containment of the animal is the appropriate response to a, a dog's, uh, bite or behavior. So what this would do is make sure that the animal is microchipped so that it has permanent identification. And the chance that it were to get out of its enclosure or slip its collar, it has permanent identifications that we can identify that it is a dangerous dog deemed by the county. Um, that it's a secure enclosure as well as posted notice, that the animal's been sterilized and that it cannot reproduce, that the person carries $300,000 in liability insurance and that the dog has, uh, is current on its license and its rabies vaccinations. Those are the majority of the changes, um, as put forth by, uh, by this, this revision of this ordinance. And at this point, if you have additional questions or concerns, I would love to hear them.
Anyone have any questions?
I guess I have a few.
Okay.
Um, I'll start with, uh, Section 2.2. You said livestock shall have a sound, three-sided roof structured or appropriate. Uh, that livestock refers to farm animals?
Correct.
So, which I asked the question, Carrie Hapthing, if you had a, and I can come up with numerous examples, one would be the horse farm where they had the incidents, which they're import for other purposes now. But, uh, let's take a dairy farmer with a hundred plus cows and they're free grazing. Each one of those cows is going to have to have a three structure figure?
No. Um, according to the Department of Agriculture, a three-sided, uh, structure is, is sufficient so that the animal has the option to get out of the elements. Um, as well as the topography can also be different. Um, so if there is a ravine, um, the wording I wanted to get away from was that if there was a grove of trees or something similar.
What's the difference in what you just said? Topography?
The topography being that it provides, um, additional, uh, uh, depth where it can be cooler, um, as well as, um, that I've run into situations where someone has pointed to three trees and said, well, that's our, their windbreak. So the current wording with it, with it saying that it just needs to be a windbreak, um, doesn't quite cover that.
Lots of questions in regards to that. Um, who's going to determine this? You?
And our animal control officers, correct.
Okay, and they're going to go by your guidance?
Correct.
So if you had a farm with a hundred cows on it and I'll just give some of my history as growing up on a farm with a grandfather, um, he had, we fenced the entire farm. I was probably in the way, but it helped him put out barbed wire fencing. He allowed the cows to go in the woods.
Mm-hmm.
And you're telling me that trees would not be a windbreak?
No, what I'm saying is one or two trees is not a windbreak. Um, so it would have to be something substantial. I'm happy to change the wording and to take a look at this and to adjust that wording. So just so the definition is a lot more clear. Um, what I don't like seeing are goats that are just tied out next to a shrub and someone is saying, oh, well, it has a windbreak. It has shade, when it really doesn't.
Well, I grew up on a farm. I'm gonna disagree with what you're trying to present to us. Uh, my neighbor has seventeen cows. He has no woods, he has no windbreak. They just sit out there in the field. And if they choose to sit out in the rain and the wind, that's the, the cow's choice. They're big animals, they choose to sit out there. You're saying that somebody could turn them in and be in violation of your ordinance that you proposed?
If, if that person does not have a three-sided, um, if they don't have any sort of windbreak and they don't have a three-sided structure, they're in violation of the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development.
Well, they do have barns and the cows will come in when they want and it's like.
That's perfect.
Timeframe is, uh, they leave in the morning, they come in at night.
Yep.
But all during the weather, they're still out in the fields, regardless of the weather. That's just what they do. You're saying that they, this person could be fined and held in violation of your ordinance if the cows decide not to come in at five in the afternoon and get their feed?
As long as there's a structure available. It doesn't say that the cows have to be in the structure. We were just recently on a property where all seven cows were squeezed into a tiny little structure. That's fine. They had enough coverage. Um, they were trying to get out of the sun and they were quite hot.
Okay, I can go many things, Sharon. I've got lots of questions. I want to take a whole lot of time.
Sure.
What about chickens? Do they require a three-sided figure, a structure with a roof?
Um, poultry falls under a different, um.
Not what it says, not what it says in your ordinance. You said livestock.
Well, live, livestock in the definition of this means horses, stallions, colts, geldings, mares, sheeps, lambs, bulls, bullocks, steers, heifers, cows, jacks, janets, burrows, goats, pig, kids and swine and fur-bearing animals raised in captivity. So poultry falls under a different category.
With, uh, lambs, as far as cropping the tails or anything like that, or the things that, uh, potentially what my grandfather, uh, just growing up, you have one bull on the farm, the rest are made into steers. Is that going to fall into anything in here where it would be cruelty to an animal?
Uh, no, no, that when, the cropping and docking pertains to dogs.
That's not what it says in here.
I'll be glad to make that adjustment and write that in.
Because that's going to put a huge cost on farmers that have animals. I mean, it'd, it'd be a huge cost if they got to do what they normally do in their business of running a farm, that they have to go to a veterinarian for every single animal and they're very well-trained to do this.
Understood.
Dave's much more experienced than I am at this because he does farm, but just growing up in my aspect. What about for animal cruelty? And I just go, remember again from my grandparents, uh, my grandmother, she had 500 chickens and I put that in there too. Chopping block, can you still chop off their heads in here?
Of course, they're livestock. They're, they're poultry.
Okay, so that's legal. Um, at what section is your cropping?
Um, there's two sections, which is, uh, under mutilate, which means to destroy or disfigure a body part other than to spay, neuter, um, or dock ears or a tail in accordance with standard veterinary practices set forth by the American Veterinary Medical Association and performed by a state licensed veterinarian.
Could you give me the section so I can review that?
Yep, it's, uh, within the definitions.
Okay.
Under mutilate.
Okay, just in definitions, since you don't have a section in that.
There is a section, it is Section 7.
You have it printed out, Dave?
I'm sorry, what?
You have it printed out? You have it printed out in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, so on the page, Article 7, on that page, the backside of it, there's one toward the bottom that talks about the mutilate.
It's right in Article 7?
Yep. Yep, toward the bottom of the page.
Thank you.
You want to look at Page 4 and, and 15?
Um, so you're saying you're going to be the enforcing agent? Because I still got many questions.
Yes.
Has our county sheriff been advised of this and been able to review this? Because I believe in cases, he's going to have to send his officers out for enforcing. When you have to go on property, I don't believe that you may want a sheriff with you.
Um, while we are no longer underneath the Sheriff's Department.
I know that.
Um, we report directly to the county administrator. We're one of the few standalone agencies in the state. Uh, we work very closely with the Sheriff's Department. Um, and we have worked with them when we come to, uh, a point within our report writing, uh, within our investigation that we do believe that a warrant needs to be issued or that, uh, something more than a citation is issued. We work closely with, uh, the Sheriff's Department to have one of their deputies or their detectives review our report and make their determinations and get the warrants that we need.
How many officers you got working with you that potentially could enforce this?
I have two animal control officers.
So yourself and two, that's three for the entire county?
Correct.
I just have concerns that you're going on somebody's property. We've hit, we had, this got addressed and I remember because I was township supervisor and the, uh, it got quite an uproar here. There is hundreds of people here. in the, it got quite an uproar here, there was hundreds of people here. And Steve Semasko wrote a letter, asked that we could do a workshop on this, and apparently this is going directly to the full board in two weeks, potentially approve these. I've got lots and lots of issues about it.
Steve's was directly for dogs, I can tell you that, I was here, we weren't addressing livestock, we weren't addressing poultry, you know, I just want to be clear on that.
Well, we just addressed that it could include cows, it could include horses, as far as your livestock, with the three-sided structure and the appropriate size. We don't have anything in here that tells what an appropriate size is.
No, we'd rather not get prescriptive on the size. It just needs to be available according to the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development.
Okay, so if you have a four-by-four structure and you have a horse that's six-foot tall, that wouldn't be appropriate?
The animal would be, need to be able to turn around, lay down, and move.
Okay. So we have no specifics, but we have an ordinance, wording in our ordinance that we need to have a structure of appropriate size, but we do not have a definition of appropriate size?
That can be added in?
Okay. On the microchip, is that, and we have corporate counsel here, who determines if a microchip is going to be put into a dog or an animal?
That would be when the, I think, my understanding reading the ordinance would be the judge would order that.
It would have to be ordered from a court order?
Right.
Okay.
So that would be after we enforce our ordinance. Or a dog is deemed to be dangerous, and then the judge doesn't decide on euthanasia, they decide on a lower remedy.
You added quite a bit under 3.4. That's already state law, why do we have to put state law? I have a concern with us getting direction from the state for our ordinances within here. I know as vice chair on the Planning Commission and Riley Township, we do send information to the metro planning and Dave Struck, and they do an excellent job, but I would be very hesitant to have the state directing what we're going to be doing in the county. I think we already have much, much too much government overreach. And if we're doing this because the state asked us to do this, and if you have any emails, I would like to have the documentation that you received from the state representative that instructed you to try to change our ordinance with this. So if you have that, I would like a copy of that.
Holly did not instruct me to change it. She said that I should take a look at it.
Just verbal, then?
Just verbal.
So all of this is from yourself?
Correct.
All right, so that we weren't really mandated by the state to do anything? Even though that in the instructions that was given to us, sent to all the commissioners, that this was mandated by the state and recommended by the state?
I don't believe the language says mandated. Can somebody please read that?
From what we had from Carrie Hapting, was recommended from the state.
Excuse me, Commissioner, I did say there were recommendations that we look at it from the state and to be in compliance with current state law.
Would be in compliance with state law.
So we do need to follow state law.
We do that anyways, and the previous ordinance did that. You don't need to add state law.
It doesn't, that's why we're looking at it. Commissioner, the definition of dangerous dog is not in compliance with the current statute. The revision would be.
Right, well, this revision, 3.4, exactly dictates state law. We don't need to have something in an ordinance that dictates state law. We're already bound by state law to be in compliance. Now we're adding something in there, and from then, what I was given is that we were instructed or recommended that we do this, and now you're telling me that we weren't recommended to do this, anything in documentation. So I have a concern with the state doing this, but apparently it should want to change this.
Section 3.4 puts forth the requirements to be an animal control officer, and that is a best practice within the state to include that in your animal control ordinances.
Could you show me that where the state says that?
The state does not say that, I'm saying it's a best practice.
You just said that, though.
It's a best practice amongst animal control officers.
That's what the state instructed you?
No, animal control officers. Animal control departments across the state, it is a best practice to have within your, within your animal control ordinance to have the definition of what an animal control officer is, what they're, what they are required to do, and how they are required to become an animal control officer.
I haven't had a chance to go through this page by page by page. I've just got some questions. You have a grandfather provision in here. Are you saying that there is nothing in the county that would be grandfathered anymore? Everybody is in compliance?
Everybody is in compliance outside of one kennel that is still classified as a consent kennel, and they would easily move to a kennel that would be from four to 20.
Okay, and I've got legal counsel here. If it's grandfathered in and they were already a kennel in compliance, and the specifications that were given to them to be in lawful kennel, you're saying they have 12 months to change what their current practice is?
Correct. To come into compliance with that ordinance.
I would like corporate counsel to look at that. I don't believe you can force a grandfathered kennel that was in compliance at that time.
I don't know the specifics about this certain kennel or whether they can or cannot, but I'm happy to look at it.
If you could, I definitely want corporate counsel to look at that part of it. To put that into an ordinance, I would believe that, because we have the same thing in the township, you have, and Georgia would know this, you have many things that when you write new ordinances, in Riley Township, it used to be an acre, now it's two acres, 200-foot frontage. That doesn't make the previous parcels illegal to build or anything else, or the setbacks, they have setbacks. In Algonquin Act, what they did down there, a person that buys property, and he wanted to do a lot of building, the Algonquin Act told them they couldn't do it, well, of course, they took it and went to Supreme Court, and it had to do with the plat law back in the 1800s, that they are allowed to use the standards of those plats in that time for the building in future. They didn't have to apply to new ones. So I have a lot of concerns, and I'm just touching the base on this. I guess, I mean, I could go on and on.
Please don't. You let somebody else ask the question.
Yeah, Steve Semasko, I imagine, will be here, I really appreciated the input he put in, and I think a workshop would be worth discussing when we address this at our full board. We already have a motion and a second, and this is our discussion period, so I could bring up more, but that's enough for now.
Yes, Jeff?
I just think, you know, me being outside here looking in, I think you're trying to clean up some loose ends that are in our current thing, changes to comply with some of the state laws. If there's some tweaks that need to be additionally made, these ordinances, we tweak ordinances all the time. Going back to Steve's issue, that was kennel specific. So when you talk about everybody showing up, everybody up in an uproar, that was specifically for dog kennel changes that they were making, and kennel owners came out for that particular issue, did not address livestock. I was here, I went to three workshops with that and that kind of stuff, so, you know, a lot of work on this, and if we, like you said, we need to make a few more tweaks to it, so we had.
If I could ask you, Jeff, you said we do this all the time. When's the last time we tweaked the ordinance? The dog ordinance?
We can bring in the county holding. Wasn't that by ordinance in 2020?
Yes.
Yeah, we had to tweak the ordinance that allowed you to bring a firearm.
Ordinances.
For you to bring in a firearm.
Ordinances, revisions, put policy revisions in front of us all the time, employee type of things, you know, so it's not like that this is, if we pass this, that this is gospel, if there are a couple ands and doeses and, you know, some of those types of things.
This is going to affect, not every person, our 163,000 residents, but many, many residents have animals in various cases, whether it's cats, dogs, horses, llamas, pick your animal, pigs. This is going to affect a lot of people, this should be a great concern that we do this right.
You sure?
Yes.
Well, and I do think that, Dave, it's probably similar when you're talking about ordinances, specifically township ordinances, that MTA comes out and says, the Zoning Enabling Act of 2006 makes some changes, you may want to update your ordinance, or FEMA comes out with new floodplain regulations, you need to update your ordinance. So it's not a mandate, but if it's not in compliance, then it does make it difficult to enforce if you have two sets of rules. A lot of the things that I see in here seem to be mostly maybe keeping, updating, cleaning it up, putting, I hear you when I, you know, putting things in different categories, so it's one topic's kind of covered in one section. The one question, though, or the one thing that really did stand out to me, because and I don't know a lot about farming operations, but the section that does talk about to torture, mutilate, maiming, disfiguring an animal, this is to include docking of tails and cropping of ears, that doesn't specify just dogs. And so I would worry that that would hamper other types of animals where that might be completely appropriate in a farming operation. If you're only talking about dogs, I think that section should be specific to dogs?
Yes, and that's it, that's definitely a wording that can be changed.
Okay. There are right now five states where it's illegal to dock or crop a dog unless a vet does it. And in Michigan, the State House in 2020, a House bill was introduced, sent to the committee. I don't know where that went, but it was specific to dogs, not to any other type of animal, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
I got one question on farming practices. We can't regulate on farming practices above what USDA does, can we? As far as animal control?
We can regulate a certain degree of humane care, just like there's federal laws, the state laws can be more stringent, county laws can be more stringent. So we can regulate beyond what the USDA requires. That is not our goal here. Our goal here is to make sure that the people and the animals within this county are experiencing safe humane existence, whether they're sent to slaughter, whether they're companions who want to walk safely down the street.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We have a motion and support for moving forward to the full board?
Yes.
Do we need a roll call on this? You want a roll call vote? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrello? Commissioner Rushing?
Definitely no.
Commissioner Bandenbush?
Yes.
Passed. Moving on to residential substance abuse treatment grant approval, application approval.
Make motion, send to full board.
Support. Baldwin.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on, the sheriff's contract approval request for Tech 84 for the jail intercept, intercept body scanners.
Make a motion to move it to full board. Support. Baldwin.
Any questions on that? We do have the sheriff here if we have any questions. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the sheriff's office contract approval for Motorola Solutions.
Motion sent to full board.
Support. Baldwin.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Can I get a motion to receive and file packets?
Motion to receive and file? Support. Baldwin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Motion for adjournment.
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
This time I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners' Environmental Public Works Committee to order, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Semasko? Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbush?
Here.
Commissioner Torrello?
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make the motion to accept the agenda. Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any citizens wishing to be heard tonight? Seeing none. Is there any updates from the board for this evening? Seeing none. Go to new business. Item 7A, Parks and Recreation, proposed fee revision.
Make motion, send to full board.
Support. Baldwin.
I think Dennis is here if anybody has any questions.
Reduction in fees, and I support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B, Blue Water Conservation District Funding Request.
Motion. Support. We got Charlie here. Charlie, you, both of you guys spokesperson?
Yep. I'm Charlie Lewis. I guess I should say I'm also the largest livestock producer in the St. Clair County, so we do not need any, we get enough regulation from the state as far as what to do with our animals, we don't need any help from the county level with anything. Cattle are well-adapted and take care of themselves. But this is, Joe Keltz, he is our executive director, and we'd like to thank you for the $30,000 that you've given us over the last three years. We've turned it into $1.4 million for farmers and forest owners and other-
We're here, we're bringing in, like I said, about $1.4 million worth of grants to local farmers. In the audience, we have Emily Crimmens, who's, she's our office manager, but also our meat technician, and she works with the livestock animals to keep them in compliance with the state law as well.
The BEAP is the Michigan Agricultural and Environmental Assurance Program. It's a voluntary program that you get into as a livestock producer and helps you keep the environment clean and healthy. I also just wanted to say as part of a joke, Joe said it's been 12 years, I was going to say nine years, I was going to say Joe and I look a lot older now, but Howard was here when we started, and he looks the same, so.
So, I do have a full presentation, but I don't have to go through it all tonight. I do like to come once a year, you guys have been funding us and telling us all the great things that we've done with your money. We're still continuing to try to pull that money into St. Clair County and Macomb County as our USDA office here in Kimball services Macomb County, that's why they are part of this venture and partnership that we do as well. We're here tonight to ask for the same $30,000 over three years, which is $10,000 a year. I know there's a cost of inflation on it, but the district itself, for those of you, the newer commissioners, the Blue Water CD, we are the combination of Santa Clara and St. Clair CDs now. We legally merged probably about six years ago. But we've kind of partnered with our tree sales and the partner sharing of resources. We've done well, we're able to keep our costs or our revenue stream flowing, we don't have to ask for more money. So it's been a great, great partnership. Macomb County is on board with it, we're bringing in probably about 40 producers into contracts a year with it, so we average about, you know, one, one and a half million dollars. I just got a report that was updated by our NRCS DC, I think there's about 30 to 40 new applications that were just submitted for the next round of funding. There is the Inflation Reduction Act money, there's a lot of money allocated to USDA or to the USDA programs, and the NRCS is saying there's not enough help to even bring that money into each agency or each office across the country. So the more the conservation districts can do on the local side, the better chances or more help we can bring money to our constituents in this area. I've got lots of statistics and all that, but I just want to keep it short and answer questions if you guys would prefer it that way. Jake, do you have something to say?
No, I'm good.
Jake is a farmer, probably, I'm guessing, 5,000 acres in the southwestern parts of the county.
I'm from Lynn Township, and me and my dad and my boy, we were farming for 5,000 acres in St. Clair County, and they asked me to be on the board a couple years ago, so here I am.
Couple, another new program we started, we're trying a strip till program, not taken off quite yet, but we have a lot of money invested in it, but we're hoping to utilize, well, we have probably about 200,000 invested in it, but we're hoping to utilize fertilizer and strips for crops versus broadcast to help the lakes and streams and so forth. It's a newer concept to try to get people to, farmers to buy into, so we're picking away at it, still offering it. And just last week, we actually were able to acquire a 10-acre parcel out on M19, kind of right by Fisher Road, to be kind of in the center of the district. Our goal is to kind of make that a research plot to try strip till. We want, fruit tree pruning is huge with people wanting to learn, we're going to try and put a few fruit trees out there, and then of course, our equipment storage, we're struggling with spots to store, so we'll now have a home for different things. So we're growing as a district, we're doing well, we just like to keep this partnership and bring some USDA money our way. Any questions for us? I like it.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion in a second?
We do.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7C, Resolution 23.1, Airport Sponsor Contract Approval Environmental Assessment Phase Two.
Motion sent to full board.
Support. Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, Smith Creek Nanophill Activity Report.
Did we have one?
No.
Oh, we didn't. Sorry. Other environmental public work matters? No. Item 10A, the monthly.
Make motion to receive and file monthly park financial documents. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Receive and file packet.
Make motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
David, I'm gonna need like a three minute break. All right. Uh, we're taking a three minute break before I open up the meeting.
I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco, Commissioner Beeden.
President.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Torrello.
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbosh.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here. Any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda I seen on can have a motion.
So moved, Baldwin.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. We have three citizens wishing to be heard. I'm going to start with Liz Masters from Wales Township and it has to do with ARPA funds.
Hi there, good evening. I'm going to try to make this short and sweet. It's a little bit more than ARPA. My concern tonight is the deadline with the ARPA funds. That window is closing. And I also have serious concerns, as everyone knows, I've been speaking all along, as a representation of the people of the areas where it's been an idea of how to use the ARPA funds on 26 Mile Road. Everyone knows that. I'm opposed of that for several reasons. So I would just like to, before that window closes or before this board arrives at a decision, to please remind you that you are speaking for your constituents. I'm the township supervisor out at Wales. There's nothing in this job that any one of you took for an income. We know your income, it's public. My income is public. It comes time when you're thinking on these subjects that I just ask each one of you before you make one of these decisions, like I do. I make unpopular decisions sometimes. I think it's good for the people. But I also have to look in the mirror. And I also have to look at the constituents before I make that decision. Or I have to decide to step away from that decision. So I'm just going to please remind you. Use on those ARPA funds, that was designed to help the county. And I liked hearing from the veterans tonight. We heard that side. And it brought to mind that our residents of St. Clair County historically have supported millages. They've supported millages for our veterans over and over. They've supported millages for our fire in emergency over and over. And they have been very supportive on our millages of roads. And to use those ARPA funds, I just ask that you look back to the constituents. While they're supporting you with these millages and with their tax monies, maybe you could help them out a little bit before we're looking at possibly a recession or something moving forward. Because I think they've spoken over and over on their votes. So I ask that you look at that. I ask that you think about the words "change." I heard that a couple of times through the past summer. Change, progress, growth. Change is not always, I hate the term "change is good." We have to think about that. There can be a change for the bad. We can digress. Progress. We can progress in a bad direction, in a detrimental direction. And growth. If it's unplanned, if it's without due process, and if it's without the public involvement and the public hearings, then that's unplanned growth. And that lands willy-nilly. So I thank you for your time on that. And as far as the Health Advisory Board, I'd just like to speak out. I heard an applicant.
Liz.
In there again. Thank you. A VA, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Libby Prohl. 26 Mile Road and Conduct.
Good evening. Local official advised that Dan Casey and Jeff Bone met with Eagle and Clearass wastewater regarding a potential plant on 26 Mile Road. It sounds like you guys are applying for a grant of some sort. Either you are or you're getting ready to through the MEDC that will relate to the Palms and 26 Sewer System Engineering and Design. I would hope that you give us more information on this. Clearass is the group, I believe, that grows algae in wastewater. It can be used to create fuel, fertilizer, or plastic. So it would be nice to know exactly what this facility is for. Also, I hope that you consider that despite the encasements, the odor of these type of treatment facilities can be an issue. And actually can be carried for quite a distance depending on the wind. I'd also like to know if this project is somehow tied into the water sewer project in Algenack and Clay Township, which we were told was needed so the communities have backup water services? Or is this really more about supporting a manufacturing facility? The majority of residents have been very clear that we do not want this area industrialized. Your own $147,000 weight trim study does not recommend industrialization east of Meldrum. However, I feel like some of you persist without respect for the negative impact on the lifestyle that residents in this area enjoy by persisting in pursuing industry that is not zoned for there currently and that we do not want. We do not want industry located there. That does not mean that we're anti-industry. We just want it where it belongs. So for over a year, we've been telling you this. And we've been asking you to direct your efforts to protecting our farmland, our green space, our small-town rural lifestyles, which we have a right to keep. And that you put industry over existing blight and existing industrial corridors. The smart people from Macomb County, they can travel 11 miles north of 94 just as easily as they can travel 11 miles east out 26 Mile Road. The ARPA funds should not be used to support this. And I ask that you discontinue pursuing these type of industrial developments in this area. Quickly, I ask all of you to examine conduct. We've had photos of things, very inappropriate behaviors, having been witnessed by some of our public leaders. Given the recent heinous crimes in the news, it's safe to say that our society grows ill. And no wonder, given the poor rural males holding office. Public office comes with a higher...
26 Mile Road and the direction the ARPA funds should go into. And I agree with majority of what they say, if not all what they say. And I encourage the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to progress in voting on opposing 26 Mile Road project using ARPA funds towards that direction. And direct them towards the townships where it's best needed, where they can see where it's best needed, where our funds don't quite reach the needs of their communities. Thank you.
All right. I have no other citizens wishing to be here. Is there any others? Seeing none, we'll move up to number four, Updates. Do we have any updates? Seeing none. Conceptual initiatives? We have none. No old business. We'll move to 7A. State of Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, MDHHS, lease.
Make a motion to move it to full board. Support.
Any discussion? Just want to add a little bit myself. I think this is going to be great for the county. We're going to get, from what I understand, is the same amount of lease agreements are going to give the Michigan, State of Michigan, time to get out of this end of our building and to make renovations potentially for our health department moving in there and upgrading their facilities. Short version. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. 7B, this has to do with the ARPA funds. There is no actions to be taken. Like this is to start the discussion of what we want to do with the ARPA funds. Steve Samasco, when he ran for office and he won the primary, he gave us a detailed kind of a place where we could proceed and where the ARPA funds could potentially be used. No action was taken on that. Joe Bixler from Michigan State, he used to be Michigan State University, he addressed this forward two weeks ago and his concerns and where the ARPA funds could be. Him and I had about a half an hour discussion today because I told him, please give me a call, which he did. It was a very good discussion. And he's going to give me a detailed of where he potentially wants the ARPA funds, where they could potentially be used. And I think each one of us have an obligation of what we want to do with the balance. I don't know if it's 14 million or 16.3, but whichever figure it is, I believe I'll give you my perception, I think. And I gave you my speech about Davy Crockett when he addressed the United States Congress. And it had to do with, it's not our money. And it had to do when he went back to Tennessee and talked to one of his constituents. And what the Congress did, and I can't speak near as what the speech he gave, but they allocated $20,000 to Georgetown for a fire that happened. That was excessive amount of money back then. And when he went and talked to one of his constituents, which was a farmer, he said, "I can never support you again. If you and the Congress can take monies and use it for whatever purpose you want without representing who actually put you in office." The person said he couldn't support Davy Crockett ever again. Davy Crockett took that personally, went to Congress and adjusted his position and gave a great speech that it wasn't their monies to spend. My position on this is that the ARPA funds remaining, and we did give Kerry Hepting direction on 7 million. So the balance of funds, I think every taxpayer within the state or in St. Clair County deserves an equal share. And that's pretty much the position I'm going to support. Unless we have specific means or needs that will address the county, and I can justify that, all right, District 6, this benefits you in addition. And I think that's what Liz Masters was saying also. We have an obligation to support those who put us in office. This is not our money. It's the taxpayers' money. It's the monies of who put us in office. And we should be doing everything we can to support them. There's my little spiel, and I'll say a little bit more, but anybody...
I think the number 16.8, if I'm not mistaken, is the...
Yeah, it's 16 million. And I don't know the exact number, but it's around 16 million, a little more.
Okay, so we gave Kerry, well, we allocated X amount of dollars to specific projects. County's in the process of out getting bids on those right now. My concern is if we just say, okay, there's X amount of dollars left over right now, we're going to give everybody, you know, X amount to spend on their district. What, we wouldn't be prudent to do that right now. We don't know what the Health Department move is going to cost, right? That's going to be 2, 3, 4, 5 million. I mean, anything we've seen coming in bid-wise, and we've had some recent bid openings, it's crazy. St. Clair had an engineer's estimate for 12 million to do some enhancements to their water and sewer plant that came in at 19, right? So I think, first of all, we have to see what the projects that the county has on board, just understand where those come in, right? I know Kerry's working with an engineering firm, or you're going to be engaging in engineering firm, to get us some estimates on what the move for the Health Department could, you know, what it looks like over here. We just don't want to cut ourselves short if we have some internal things that we need to do. And these projects, this money has to be spent by the end of 2024. I know it's burning a hole in everyone's pocket.
That's be allocated 2024, spent by 2026.
Correct.
I understand.
Projects underway by the end of 2024.
Yeah. So I'm saying, as far as, you know, additional works, things happening, we still have some time to, you know, figure some of that stuff out, too. The, like I said, the Health Department thing, this is probably a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be able to set them up for, you know, long-term. And if anybody's familiar with the Health Department building, it's the worst building we have, bar none. So this is a good chance to be able to do it. So I know we have prices on new build, which is crazy, $30 million or something like that, to fix existing. And then this opportunity now. So we need to get some numbers back on that. And I'm not going to say we don't need to, you know, continue to work on figuring out the ARPA funds, but I don't think, I don't want to walk out of here tonight and say, okay, we got 16 million bucks, every commissioner gets whatever, and then it comes back that the Health Department is, like I said, however many millions.
I agree with everything you said. On the Health Department, Liz is here. I'd ask her to take a look at it as we go forward here. And I want to, a closure, it could be three months. I wouldn't want to go six months out before we make a decision what we're going to be doing with the money. Liz probably has some monies that can assist in upgrading the building here. If she doesn't, then she needs to tell us that. Are we potentially going to keep the property at the Health Department now, or are we going to sell it?
Well, that will be up to the board, but my recommendation would be that the board sell that property.
Those monies that potentially, you get an estimate from whoever, those could offset the cost. We could front the money for the Health Department and use the monies that could potentially be raised at that.
That building is not selling for 4 to 6 million dollars over there, I can tell you that.
Well, depending on the location, and I don't know if they have rail access over there or not, but potentially, whatever it goes for, but those monies could be used to help offset any...
Yeah, I just, I just don't want you to think it's going to be a tit-for-tat on that building.
No, no. And maybe Liz has some money in her budget that could actually assist also. And that's a very good thing that we need to be doing. The Health Department is one. I don't know how many other potential, I don't know if any other commissioners got some issues. If we want to set 4 million aside for the Health Department, if that's a good figure, we can discuss that and say out of the remaining money, 4 million will be used for that specific issue. And if it's not used up and allocated by 2024, if there's monies to free up, we can take a look at that. And then address this again for the 31 municipalities that we represent. But here's one thing we can definitely look at and get some figures on for the Health Department, what the actual cost is.
I think Kerry's, you're in process of that right now. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So we actually have an RFP out for the architects. We're doing the walkthroughs tomorrow. We do have preliminary architect estimates on square footage for office renovations, a total, you know, gutting. We do know that 100% of that space will not need to be renovated because there's a lot of existing office space. It would be more patient care area, clinic area. So, you know, maybe 40 to 50% of that space may require some renovations.
Something like that, I could easily explain to the townships I represent that this is actually going to benefit District 6 also. So I could potentially support that, get the figures in. And how many acres are over, just a guess, at the current place? 10, 15? It's a pretty good-sized piece of property, isn't it?
No.
Building and parking lot.
Yeah, the building and the parking lot, and then there's a small fielded area.
Might be four acres, then.
It's not very large.
I think, if I may. Chair, rushing. I think anytime we're looking at internal projects, I'm not sure how that is differentiated from not serving the residents as a whole. If we've got 43 million in projects that need to be done in services we provide to county residents, aren't, I mean, I guess I don't see the difference between Fort Grashit, you know, if I had money and I gave it to Fort Grashit for a specific project, or money I voted on that went to the Health Department, still is helping Fort Grashit. But anything we do here, anything on those CIPs is all to serve county residents, correct?
Depends on what it's doing. If it's going to assist the city of Port Aaron, and I don't believe you are here, but before the city of Port Aaron had their own dispatch, the cost was about $650,000. We now provide that free. And Clay Township still has that option to be part of the county. They choose not to, and it would save them a ton of money.
We get their telephone service charge money, though. We don't give it to them.
Correct.
We collect that part of the service and then, quote-unquote, it's free. Previous Port Aaron collected that revenue.
Right.
So I don't want you to...
No, not the total 650, but we're still not...
But I just want to clear, it's not free.
I agree. So this is one project we could look at. I think we need to have this sooner rather than later. And please get your thoughts in and get some projects that we can look at and get some costs down. Because I want to have a vote on this sooner rather than later. I'd definitely be pushing for it and then be held accountable to wherever our votes go. And Steve did give us information back in August that we should be looking at this. And Joe Bixler is also going to be giving us one with, or give me one, which I'll give to the board, his thoughts of what should be.
I had 40 departments that gave me their thought when we got $31 million. Trust me, everybody in the...
This should have been done already, and it hasn't been done. It's going to come 2024, and we're not going to have the projects and the monies allocated. I think we represent the county as a whole, and if there's monies that can be used countywide for each, because everybody's got their own individual needs. I know who I represent. The monies, from my understanding, can be used for fire departments, those volunteer fire departments out there. Riley Township, and they pay their bill to Memphis. Each volunteer fireman out there gets paid $12 a run. If he's out there five, six hours, he gets $12, uses his own vehicle. And same thing with them. And I don't know the exact hourly rate there. But every township and city and village is going to have their own specific needs. Potentially Emmett, which is not in my district, it's in Steve's, for their water sewage and treatment plant. They had to upgrade theirs because the state mandated it from them. And then they had a cost for every village resident. It was $10,000. There wasn't a choice. You had to tie in. So every municipality's got their own specific needs. So I think we need to address this. So that's why I got it on the agenda, and I'm going to push for that we take a vote one way or the other. Any other discussion?
No, just to this point, though, we've been pretty much on the same page. We've had unanimous votes for moving forward in the direction we were going. We unanimously voted to do some internal projects, correct? We unanimously voted for some studies. So I think you're right. I think we're at a point where we need to make some decisions. But it's not that, we've all kind of been okay with the progression until now, and I think it is time to start to put pen to paper and make it happen. But there hasn't been this device, there have been ideas on this board. This board, you were on this board when Steve submitted that, just like the rest of us were, except for...
One of the discussions with the residents that have been addressing this board quite a bit over the last six months, I believe, no, at least six months, is the 26 Mile Road project. They keep asking me, is this dead? Well, I believe it is, but it isn't until we allocate these monies, because there could easily be a vote on here, that something comes up on 26 Mile Road, whatever it is, and this board could potentially stake a vote on it, and then the money actually goes to 26 Mile Road. Until we allocate these monies, they are not allocated. And I want to get them allocated. And I think we have a responsibility to do that. Anything else? There's no motion needs to be made or anything? All right, we'll move on to 7C. Medical Director Employment Agreement, Dr. Remington Nevin.
Make a motion to move it to full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
Liz is here this evening. I had the opportunity to participate in the interviews process again this round. And Dr. Nevin was unanimously put forward. I think he'll be a great asset to our community. He is a veteran. He's looking for part-time. He has another position, which I think makes him pretty unique in that he can fulfill the part-time requirement of this position. And I think he'll be a tremendous asset to our county.
I, oh, go ahead.
If I might, I just wanted to let the board know that Dr. Nevin does plan on being in attendance at your full board meeting, so you'll be able to meet him and ask any questions you may have.
Well, I read the entire resume, and his intention is to move to St. Clair County. He's currently in Vermont, correct?
Yeah, he's on the East Coast.
Yeah. And he seems very qualified. And being a vet, that gives a big plus for me, just because my family, as much as they've served, so. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7D, AT&amp;T Contract for Telephone Services. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
This is a pretty...
Any discussion?
Pretty significant savings.
Yes, it is. 42,000 annual savings with this AT&amp;T contract. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7E, Commissioner Bandenbosh, District 7, America Resting Plan Project, Clay Township. Can I have a motion first?
Can I make a motion?
Support.
This is for a communication patch for the new weather sirens for Clay Township at their dispatch center that someday may be our dispatch center, who knows? You know, and they just upgraded their panels and everything so that way they can set off their own sirens if they need be.
And if you look at it, the invoice has already been paid by Clay Township, and they're asking to be reimbursed, just as have done for all the other municipalities and townships for expenses they've spent. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any other Ways and Means matters?
Just a quick one, Dave. So just for some clarification. So Dan Casey, myself, representatives from Clearass met with Eagle. Eagle has monies for, let's call them green projects, okay? Algenack Clay IRA is currently the wastewater treatment facility for the southern end of the county. The Clearass is looking to potentially build a research and demonstration project next to the facility down there to help increase capacity in that system. And I think everybody knows that they need increased capacity. So this, this isn't being talked about 26 Mile Road or any of that stuff. This is to enhance current facility that has capacity issues and would, you know, whether you like it or hate it, the state has different pockets of money that they set aside, and it's very hard for them to find different projects to participate in. So we had a meeting with multiple people from Eagle. That was, I don't even know how long ago, maybe a month ago. So that's, that's what that's about.
All right.
And on Wednesday, Dennis Delore was on, he took over The Paul Miller Show and was a co-host with Nancy Windsor. So the podcast is on there. But I see that he left, but I wanted to point out that he did a great job that morning representing the county as he took over the airwaves from 6:00 to 10:00.
Well, I have one. I guess it's Ways and Means because it has to do with money. And I brought it up, and now that it's over. But the high school I went to in Swabrooke in Germany, and I was there in '70, '71, the initial opening of the school, and it was on a Air Force Base. My dad served in the Army at the time. And we had a reunion at the convention center and the Hilton Doubletree. And we had a fantastic band, Killer Vibes. They did a fantastic job. We had a DJ and a karaoke. They did the boat trip. They, the Tuscan Airman, they really got that. A lot of people really appreciated that. And they did a lot of sightseeing, got a lot of compliments. They said it was the best reunion that they've had. And I've been going to these myself since 2006. They started them in 1986. They said this was, nobody complained about anything. The meals were fantastic. I've been trying to get ahold of Gino, and we're playing phone tag. Hannah, who works for him, she was fantastic. She was there every night until midnight. And the reunion was from June 22nd to the 25th at the Doubletree. I had a dozen staying at my farm, starting on Sunday, and the last ones left on the 26th. So my wife and I were ready to take a break on Tuesday. So there was a lot of work put in by myself. I pretty much organized the thing because I was here. We have the president, Audrey, and myself as vice president of our reunion alumni, and also Sean Cosgrove, who is the treasurer. And, but we're just super, and I just like to talk about them. It was fantastic. All right. All right, I need a motion for information-only charter Township of Port Aaron Zoning Board of Appeals, public hearing notice.
Receive and file. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Need a motion, receive and file.
So moved, Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Baldwin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.